We'd like to go ahead and get started with our meeting, a little bit late. We apologize for our tardiness. Trust us, it was an energetic conversation that we all enjoyed. But we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in every civil, liberty, and justice for all.
Secretary will note the rule. And we have one absence tonight. I'd like to make an announcement that we did have an executive session, hence this meeting starting at this time. Before the meeting, there is none planned for after the meeting, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, very well. And we're going to move now to public comment. Normally, at the outset of the meeting, public comment is limited to those items which are on the agenda. We have four requests to speak tonight, so far, if more want to come in, that's great, that are not on an agenda item. But, they are related to a budget item and to something that's before the public. And I'd like to go ahead and get started with those public comments. Does anybody have an objection to making that slight change?
No.
All right, very well. That being the case, I have a request here from Jane Sutera. Would you care to come on up and chat with us?
Okay, I think, you can hear me? Thank you. I come this evening with a number of different hats. A taxpayer, a grandmother, I have my three grandchildren in the Pots Grove School District, and I have 34 years as an educator. I'm a retired high school principal out of Colorado, and I moved here because of my grandchildren and family. I have been hearing different things about the library aide and the library situation. So, my ideas are, not only as the grandmother, but as an educator that has sat in many meetings and budgets and how are we going to get the best out of each dollar that we have. When I look at the library, and over the years, I see what an unbelievable function the librarian and the assistant, the aide, give to a school. We are always talking about our students' reading, we're talking about their language, we're talking about their skills, and in the library, a lot of things happen. When I see librarians, I see a mentor, which, you know, the children come in, and not only do they just look at books, but that person is a professional educator that works with children, teachers, and administrators on how to improve skills. Now, in order to do that, you need an assistant. And I just realized and found out that the librarian at Ringing Rocks is just there part-time. She goes to the elementary. That also is a concern, so I would hope that as the days and the dollars go, that you can look to keep a librarian full-time in any school. But a librarian needs a very efficient assistant. If she's going to be an educator to help with the students' knowledge, she can't be the one that's making sure all clerical and the technology and everything is going. So I would really ask you that you look at how we can look at our budget differently and not cut such an integral part of a school for our students. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Certainly, that was concise and to the point, and I want to thank you for that. I just want to remind the audience, we don't normally get this many folks commenting, which is good, as Bob said, but we do have a three-minute limit, so we would ask you to be concise and to the point as that speaker was.
All right, the next card that I have is from Robert Land.
Good evening, everyone. Hello, School Board members and administration. I also come to you tonight with concerns about the possible elimination of our school library aides. I'm a district reading specialist at Ringing Rocks. I've been here a long time, I'm a district resident. My students, my children have gone through here, and one of their fond memories was going to the library and always seeing a friendly face there, whether it was Mrs. Butero or Mrs. Connell, who was here. Our librarian, as our previous speaker said, Mrs. O'Leary, is at Ringing Rocks for three days at Rocks and three days at West Pots Grove, so those three days in which she's not in attendance in the building, we need to have someone there working with the children. One of the things that I've noticed so often is that when our present library aide is there, she has personal recognition of the children, she knows their reading interests, she knows where to send them when they need to have, you know, direction for books. I think that needs to be continued. I would be very concerned if you would go to take that to a volunteer position where folks would be asked to come in, in the goodness of their heart, community members, but also sometimes their schedules get in the way of that, and they would not be able to be there that day, not of their fault, but of just the fact that they couldn't. And then the library would not be staffed for that day. Our libraries are the hub of our learning in the school. They are really important. We need to have them open, we need to have staff members there available for them. I also am concerned, too, because as we go to electronic, checking out and electronic information on students, student information could be there that is kind of preserved by our staff member, but maybe a volunteer might see other information that may not, something that they may not be able, they shouldn't see. I think, as I said before, I think the library should be staffed by our library aides on the days in which our district librarian would be there. I would agree with the previous speaker that I'd love to see a librarian full-time in each building, but I know that's a budget, major budget constraint. But I hope you consider that and continue the library aide positions in all of our schools.
Thank you very much for those comments. One thing I would like to clarify, if I may, is I do not know of, and I would not support having volunteers come in and fill this role. That's not something that we're considering. Among the many options that we are considering, that's not really on the table. So if I can put your mind at rest about at least that one piece of this, I'll just do that. And so next, we have Lisa Coons.
I wrote this down, and I'm just going to read what I wrote, because I'm not a public speaker. As a parent and taxpayer, I'm saddened to hear that we'll be losing our library aide at Ringing Rocks. Terry Widman is an integral part of the staff and library at Ringing Rocks. I've been in that building for countless hours over the last six years. I have seen personally how she helps our kids. One of my boys is Title I. He needs new books all the time, every day, to read over and over again. Many people think all that she does is check out and shelve books. That's not the case. She's helping the kids in so many ways. She does car pickup line, she helps them find the books, she learns what their interests are, she keeps them safe in the halls in the morning, she's even yelled at me when I didn't have a badge and I was sneaking to a classroom. And she knows me, but she made me get my badge. The librarian's not in the building every day. That means, three days a week, my son cannot get a new book. The door's locked. There's, I'm sorry, I lost my place. The students will only be able to get a book out once every six-day cycle. So, sorry, no new books. Terry is essential in assisting the lesson plan development. She helps keep those 22, 5, 6, and 7-year-olds in their spot when the lesson's actually going on. She helps with discipline, she makes reading fun, she has programs that she runs that she passes out the passports, she creates the bags that the kids get to keep the library books safe in their backpacks, so water bottles and lunches don't destroy them. She makes them. If she's not there, the books are destroyed. My kids have done it. All these programs will be gone. The library aide position, also, she restores the books, she laminates, she sends out the damaged letterbooks so that the parents have to pay for the books that their kids ruin, she places orders for new books, she labels the books. Ringing Rocks will be lost without her. Eliminating the library aides will only cause lower reading scores, and it'll cause our children to have a lower ability to read. They need access to the books every day. I skipped the part about the volunteers, because I know a lot about volunteers, and volunteers will not fill this position for you. I don't come here very often. I usually bring the really good snacks at Ringing Rocks. Next year, they'll be at Lower. But just something that I've noticed, we've always had a really, really balanced budget. We've had million-dollar overages, and we created a brand-new desk position for $120,000. These five women make about that, so I kind of see where the math is going, but I'm very disappointed in the decision to eliminate them. Thank you for your time.
And finally, of the ones that have been turned in, we have Natalie Shewleton.
Hi, my name is Natalie. I'm a student here at Lower Pots Grove. I personally think that cutting the library aides would not be beneficial to our, to our school and district. Cutting the library aides would be like pulling the backbone out of a human. They are, they are the glue that holds this project together. I think that they help by doing lots of things, such as checking out the books, but they do so much more than that. They also check out, they also help keep our halls safe and clean.
Thank you very much, Natalie.
I'd like to thank everybody that had an opportunity to speak on behalf of the library aides. We continue to work through the process, it is a process, and I think that, you know, the board understands that piece. I know administratively, we understand that piece. Like anything else that we do, we look at every angle and take every consideration into this. Anytime that you talk about a possible elimination of a staff position, it's, you put a personal touch to it. So, I understand that. I've been in it long enough to experience those pieces, and when you start putting names with people, then it affects, you know, it affects a building, it affects a classroom, and that was shown here tonight. So, I appreciate those of you who had an opportunity to speak. It didn't go on deaf ears. I know the board had an opportunity to listen as well, and we'll continue to move through the process as we head to a final budget. So once again, thank you for your time and your comments.
All right, now we can move to the superintendent's reports and presentations.
At this time, I'd like to call Dr. Ziegler up to the mic for his presentation on the SOAR Resource Study Time Program. Dr. Ziegler?
Good evening, School Board. Thank you for coming back to the high school, although you're here all the time, but there's some snacks there for you to enjoy. Hey, the SOAR Study Hall was birthed out of our Child Study Team. Child Study Team is a team of teachers and counselors that work to support students who have academic deficiencies or struggling learners or fragile learners, and with the Child Study Team, they looked at, how can we strengthen student learning and reduce the number of failures and increase the number of students that are passing their courses? This is also in alignment with the superintendent's goal of closing the achievement gap and looking at the economically disadvantaged. So I want, you're going to hear a little bit about SOAR, and what it is, it's a structured study hall time, and Mr. Petrella, he is our school guidance counselor, he's going to give you an overview of what SOAR is, and then you're going to actually hear from a teacher, Mrs. Scott, who's a SOAR teacher. And just so you know, people ask all the time, does SOAR have an acronym for anything? No, we're just Falcons, soaring, you know, we talked about, and hopefully soaring gives you the version of going up. And then lastly, you're going to hear about a minute and a half from some of our students that are taking SOAR. So I'm going to introduce Mr. Petrella, our school counselor.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to be here tonight. So, as part of the Child Study Team, we noticed that, you know, students in special education have access to the resource room or support classes that many of our regular education students don't have access to. So, you know, we always try to find ways to support them more, and of course, many of our teachers do a great job of making themselves available after school for tutoring. We also have National Honor Society students, like Savannah has, that have tutored students as well, but we thought, what else could we do? And we noticed, too, that many of our students who are struggling have study halls, but they're not really doing anything with those. So we thought, maybe we could make this more of a structured study hall by having a teacher there who may be more directive with the students in attacking some of these areas of weakness, and also putting some peer tutors into those rooms as well, so that they can help them, too. So, I just have three quick anecdotes of students that have given me feedback from their experience with the SOAR rooms so far. One is a senior, one of my senior boys who was failing English 12 through three-quarters and jeopardizing graduation. This is a guy that, you know, shouldn't be in that situation, but he was, he's struggling all year with that. And we put him in SOAR, and about a month into the fourth quarter, his grade was much better. So, you know, I talked to him about why, and he said, you know, in my study hall, my girlfriend was in there, and two of my friends, there's absolutely no way I could focus on English. Now I have a place to go for 45 minutes every other day that I can really concentrate. So, even, not even thinking about getting the help, it's just a place for him to go and really focus on what he needed to do. I had a sophomore boy who has struggled in geometry all year and really was having trouble connecting with his teacher. And nothing against the teacher, sometimes a student and teacher have trouble kind of, you know, understanding one another for whatever reason, but there happened to be another math teacher in the SOAR room that really connected him, presented the material in a way that he could grasp, and he has also expressed that he feels better about the material, too. And then finally, a freshman girl who really has struggled in multiple courses throughout the year. You know, I had talked with her about different ways to study and organizational skills and things like that. Nothing seemed to be helping. She went into SOAR and connected with a peer tutor in there who had, you know, showed her some different ways that he learns and that he deals with how teachers present material and things like that. So, and she started putting these things in place and felt really good about it. So, I didn't say, look, these are the same things I've been talking to you about, but sometimes they need to hear it from a peer, you know, not just an adult who's just someone else who's trying to tell them to be better than they're doing. So, you know, that was just another example that I think that could happen in a situation, I guess. I hope, you know, we consider giving it some support. Thank you.
So, the other piece to it is, it's, you know, most of our study halls have around 25 students in them. It's a larger study hall. This has about 10 students. We try to max this out to 10, so it can be more, you know, a smaller ratio for the teacher. Each SOAR room has a smaller group, but then we're also looking to put a, you know, a tutor in there, like Mr. Petrella said. We're really looking at it, we started at this marking period as a pilot to see how we can improve this and strengthen it next year. I want you to hear firsthand from one of the teachers, also one of our AP teachers. So this is a busy week for her, so I thank her for coming out tonight. Please welcome, Mrs. Scott.
Hi, good evening. I wanted to share a couple of things, and in true, you know, data collection mode today, I was, you know, asking my peers, you know, what they thought of this, realizing that I'm not the only individual, you know, who's coming at this from participating in this, and a lot of us echoed, you know, some of the same study hall, you know, same sentiments, you know, about, you know, this very small, kind of more intimate, study hall. And that said, three days a cycle, I have a study hall that probably has 25 to 30 students in it, Mason is a member, and in that study hall, you know, there are some people that really use their time well, and then there are others who might be a little bit more social than studies, you know, in that particular location. So, you know, looking at this, you know, I was really kind of excited, you know, about the prospect, you know, and I feel that most of the faculty, you know, that I had a chance to speak to, you know, shared equally, you know, that they feel that it's a good idea. So in this study hall, the teacher, you know, goes from, you know, passive kind of supervision, you know, monitor, to cheerleader, guidance counselor, you know, focus, you know, very individual, and the reception from the kids has been interesting. I have one student in particular who is blessed to see me in SOAR Study Hall, and then he accompanies me to third period where he's in my honors class. And at first, when he walked in, he said, oh, Mrs. Scott, really? And I said, I was thinking the same thing. But, you know, sitting down with him and having the opportunity to look at, you know, where are you with respect to social studies, where are you with respect to calculus, you know, where are you, you know, with all of these, he begrudgingly said to me, this isn't half-bad. I'm like, I agree, you know, which is huge for a senior in May. So that was really kind of a neat thing, you know, not everybody shares, you know, their schedule, you know, with me, you know, to actively be in one of my classes, but that was really, you know, kind of a neat, you know, piece, you know, that we're seeing each other, you know, twice a day, you know, on that particular day. So the students have been, you know, respectful, they've been appreciative. I've seen some students raise their grades to passing and feel, you know, downright proud of themselves, you know, when that's happened. Sometimes they're failing so many subjects, like by this point in the year, that a harsh conversation or, you know, just a pragmatic conversation of, you know, where are you focusing your energies, you know, what credits can you grab, what do you need, you know, is really, you know, I think they're receptive to it. And, you know, I find that most that we're meeting up with, you know, are pretty open to that. So I actually asked the kids, you know, what they thought of this today, so I had them fill out a questionnaire. I don't know how excited they were about that, but I said, how do you feel about being in a SOAR Study Hall for the past couple of weeks? And I got the, good place to work, I don't like the quiet, you know, but it is a good place to work, and it helped a bit with turning in work, you know, that follow-through, you know, having somebody that would actually follow up and say, okay, you told me you were going to do this, you know, did you actually do it? I asked, you know, do you feel that this could be a really helpful thing for students as a whole-year program? And I had two that felt yes, you know, that this helps with accountability, you know, making sure that you're turning things in, you know, relationships with those teachers, pretty open to that. So I've been, you know, fairly impressed with it, and I'm excited to see, you know, what can happen as we move forward.
Awesome, thank you, Mrs. Scott. We're a meeting as a faculty on May 15th to look at, how can we improve this and strengthen it for next school year? So now you're going to hear from our students, some of our students that have this.
Hey, my name's Deuce Higgins, and we're here to talk about SOAR. I just want to say how much they helped me improve my grades and opportunities that I had to ask teachers for help. I have my own tutor there that can honestly help you out, and it's less kids in there, it's more so you can focus, and you can get your work done faster, easier in there.
Okay, SOAR has helped me in a number of ways. I get one-on-one time with teachers so that I can get my work done and study for tests and hand in homeworks, and it's a great place to go if you want tutoring as well.
Ever since they plucked me into the SOAR program, it's been very helpful to me. I brought numerous of my grades up. It's not as distracting as the other study halls. They even have kids come in to help tutor, and I have really enjoyed the opportunity.
SOAR has actually helped me with a lot of my classes. Certain teachers will actually sit down with you and help you focus on what classes you can accomplish, and it gives you more confidence in the sense of, all right, you can actually do this, and it gives me confidence that I can actually pass the school and all my classes. That's it.
All right, so SOAR has helped me personally, like with geometry, because I struggle with that, so it's has helped me. Also, I'm happy that I get to actually meet with my teacher that I actually have in certain classes, so if I need any help, I can actually be like hands-on with that specific teacher. So that has helped me a lot, and it has helped me like better my grades as like a student.
Seems like it's starting off on a good foot. Thank you to Dr. Ziegler and the staff that are implementing it, another great program that's happening at the high school.
I'd like to second that and just say, this is the kind of innovation, this is the kind of thought that goes into, where are the opportunities to help students and how can we meet them where they are? Students will, they may not come up with this idea on their own, they might not ask for this, but when they're given an opportunity to, where it's almost easier to do the work and have somebody there, that's a great thing, and they will take advantage of it. But it wouldn't work without the mentors and the folks in the room. So thank you to all of your staff and all the teachers that are doing that. Very much appreciated, and that's the kind of thing that people talk about when they talk about Pots Grove Spirit. So thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, moving on to Section 5, Approval of the Minutes. We're asking the board to approve the monthly board minutes for April 10th, 2018, as submitted.
Make a motion to combine 5.1, 5.2? We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Okay, and you have your minutes booked.
Okay, moving on to Section 6, Receiving Accounts for Audit.
I move that we accept the high school accounts, middle school accounts, and cafeteria accounts as presented.
So move.
I'll count as a second. You already moved.
Yes.
All right, so that's a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments on the orders? If no, motion, or all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
It's really unusual, somebody's faster than me, I don't know.
I move that we approve the payments of invoices in the amount of $4,549,463.27 for April 2018, as presented.
Second?
Come on.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions, comments about the granting of the orders? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
I move that we approve the Treasury report for April 2018, as presented, and file it for audit.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the Treasury report? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right, very good.
Moving on to the report of the superintendent, at this time, I would like to turn it over to Senior Mason McIntyre and Junior Savannah Lear with their monthly report.
Okay, start with the high school. AP tests started yesterday and will be continuing for the next few weeks. The senior class trip is coming up very soon. Keystone testing is starting up as well, and there is no school on May 15th because it is election day, so to all eligible voters, whether that be students, teachers, or parents, get out and vote, because it's a great proven way to get your voice heard. The Special Olympics will be held on May 21st, and senior finals are coming up on May 22nd and 23rd. For the middle school, the middle school and high school chorus concert will be tomorrow starting at 7:00. On May 10th, the middle school will be hosting a NOPA assembly, which we had at the high school last week. Also, on May 10th, the middle school will be hosting their STEAM Expo, and Keystone texting, testing will be starting next week, and in about two weeks, the eighth-grade final exams will begin as well.
All right, so, there we go. For the elementary schools, I'm pretty sure, yeah, all of the schools will be holding their STEAM Expo on May 10th. Also, the yeah, all of the schools will be holding their STEAM Expo on May tenth. Um, also, their book fair begins, um, next week. Um, for Lower Potsgrove Elementary, uh, beginning and advanced band concert will be held May fourteenth, starting at seven PM. The art show will be held on May sixteenth, starting at six PM. The fifth grade choral concert will also be held on May sixteenth, starting at seven PM. Um, and Lower Potsgrove Field Day will be on May eighteenth, um, which I know that many high schoolers are very excited to be volunteering with. Um, the, for West Potsgrove, the West Potsgrove Elementary Book Fair will begin at the end of, of the week as well. Um, the West Potsgrove Elementary Art Show will be held on May seventeenth, starting at six PM, and also the Orchestra Recruitment Assembly will be held on May twenty-second.
I apologize if you mentioned it. Uh, is, uh, when is the high school senior walkthrough?
It's, that's after the senior trip, right?
Yeah, it is. Dr. Ziegler, maybe.
I can't think that far ahead.
That's okay, that's okay, Mason. It's, it's, it's a disease, senioritis, I think it's called.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah.
Doctor, that was a tease, Mason.
I got it.
Tuesday, June fifth.
Thank you.
I have a question. For the STEAM Expo, is that held here in the cafeteria, or is it going to be somewhere different this year?
I thought it was. I'm pretty sure.
Turn to high school, after you're in other.
I know, I'm sorry. Thank you. I have just a quick question. Um, the high school Special Olympics, um, do you know when they're, where they'll be held and what the times are, or how we can find information?
There was a, I thought that there was a post on the discussion board. I thought that there was a post.
I'm not on that.
I, I can give you the time for you, but I know it's held at Sauterston High School. I can send you the, the information.
I would like that. I'd like to try to attend to that.
And we do a pep rally for the students, too, through the halls?
Yes.
It's awesome stuff.
And just one other quick question. Um, I wanted to ask the both of you, because I did attend, um, the NOPE for the parents' meeting, and I'd like to have your feedback on what, how you felt watching it, if you attended.
I, I did attend it. Um, I did, I liked it. Um, I thought that it was really good for, I, I think that it was kind of like, like a scared straight thing. Um, I like that approach to certain issues, especially when they're controversial like that. Um, and I feel like it could wake up some people. Um, but you're always gonna have people that are unaffected by it. Um, but I think at the end of the day, I did appreciate what it was for, and I liked that we had it because it would, it made, it made an issue that seems like something that you talk about sometimes in class, it made it seem more real, because it brought you the victims of it and the, right, right, and, um, the parents of those faces, too. So, made it more real.
And Savannah and Mason, I wanted to say thank you very much from personally. You guys have worked very hard this year. I know we only have two board meetings left. One, usually you guys aren't here, it's a work session. The next one's actually after, Mason, you graduate, so I don't know if you're gonna be coming or not. So I wanted to say, "Thank you very much for all your hard work," and Savannah, "We'll see you again next year."
Okay, thank you both very much. Appreciate it. Moving on to action items for personnel.
I'd like to make a motion.
Before we move on to making the motion to combine everything, which I think is in the offing, does anybody have any objection to any of the items being rolled into one motion? Speak now before we make the motion so we can make it one time.
Are you talking about all the others?
No, ten, just ten, paragraph ten.
Well, ten, twenty-four, ten, something.
Right. Hearing nothing, please.
I would like to make a motion that we approve ten action items, all personnel, which includes, where are we at? One, two, three, four, and five.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments on those five issues? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. All right, motion carries. Same thing with eleven, which is eleven, one through eleven, eight. If there's anybody that doesn't want to combine them, let us know.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve all of eleven action items business except for eleven, eleven point five.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on the ones that were?
I do have one comment. I'd like to thank Mr. Davis for, uh, eleven-one, for helping with the resolution at the Western Center, and we will keep our superintendent record until January when we do our reorganization.
All right, there are no other questions or comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Okay, now we need a motion on eleven-five.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve eleven point five.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments?
Couple of questions for Ms. Pacino. She, oh, there she is. Thank you. Um, not sure, I'm not asking her to share anything that, that we can't share publicly, but why the change of programs, uh, and is there, what's the cost difference if it's, if it's something that, um, we have a choice over? And, uh, not saying I'm against it, I, I, it sounds excellent, but why not a program we're already using that, you know, in regards to busing, to save on busing?
Well, we actually don't have any other students in intensive emotional support programs right now that have openings. There are only two other within an hour, um, and they're at capacity. So that's the simple answer.
And, uh, last couple of questions. Do we have a timeline? Um, I'm always thrilled to hear we're looking at, uh, creating our own programs in-house. Uh, do we have a timeline for that? And also, uh, are we, can we look at any other programs besides the intensive emotional support?
If it's okay, I'll answer your second question first. Um, so yes, we have students, as you know, as the board knows, um, in a number of programs, specific to their needs, whatever, whatever that presentation is. So the difference between intensive emotional support and emotional support is the intensive really has that kind of permeation of mental health supports and, and therapeutic component, um, in addition to the behavioral aspect. And to have a program like that for students at the primary level is, is not readily available. There are very few of them. They're costly, um, as you can see, because of the intensity of the program and the staff to student ratio that's required. Um, so we do continue to look at the options, and I've shared with the board before that, you know, meeting the students' needs is the top priority, but also we're really mindful about where we're sending transportation and trying to streamline that piece as well. Um, your first question regarding the possibility of creating our own intensive emotional support program is something that I've shared with the board and administration, that we do continue to contemplate. Um, in terms of a timeline, there are a lot of pieces associated with that, from facilities to administrative support, staffing, um, you know, approvals from the state, and, and all of the expenses that would be associated with that. So, um, what we'd like to do is to use this local program, um, and between Dr. Cantor and myself, we have eyes on the students in the program three times this week, for example. So there's very close oversight and a lot of communication. Um, but I know that we'll be starting the budget season for nineteen-twenty in the fall from our end to, to be ready to present to you in the winter. So I would say in the fall, we'll be looking at, um, you know, a recommendation for the following year. Yes.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions on this issue? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. So order without objection.
Yeah, all right. Does anybody have any question, any twelve? Twelve point three, just, uh, just for, so we can have a discussion.
Motion that we approve number twelve action items, leaving out twelve point three and twelve point twelve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the ones that are part of the motion?
Just a comment. I, I got a kick out of, um, twelve point nine, sending the, what was it? Uh, sending the boy, oh, it's boys and girls. I, I'm sorry. I thought we were rewarding the boys, and I got a kick out of, um, we're sending them to Camp Wayne for girls as their reward trip. I just found that a little ironic, but that's all I wanted to throw out there.
All things to all people, my friend. Okay. So, no other questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. So order without objection. Now we need to circle back around and go to the other two twelves. Twelve point three, right?
I have a motion that we approve, um, twelve point three, the DECA trip.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments on twelve point three, the DECA trip?
Couple of questions. Can we get more information? I don't know who, uh, Dr. Ziegler or who, who it would be, on, on DECA and paying, just the policy in general, paying for national comps. Not saying I'm against it, just want to have a little more understanding. Um, and is that the norm in other districts that they pay for, uh, pay for those? Um, and it says it's a conference. Is it a conference, or is it a competition? Um, and just, you know, more information on that. Have we been doing this ongoing? Uh, how does that work? Not saying I'm against it, just want to understand it better.
Phil, I can answer a few of those for you. Brady was in it for four years. Um, this is for the kids who qualify, who, who win at districts or regionals, I'm not quite sure. Um, so it depends on who makes it. Um, it is, as far as I know, um, the district does cover anything that's national like this. They don't cover the Hershey trip, they don't cover that. That's paid out of the students' pockets. Um, it's great, I mean, DECA is fantastic. It is. It is an amazing program, and I wish more kids would get involved because they learn so much, so much. So, um, but it all depends on who wins, and hopefully we have lots of them. Lots of winners going to nationals.
So it sounds like this has been an ongoing, um, custom. Uh, any other groups, organizations, sports, anything that we typically send a national conference?
When they, when they go to nationals, robotics, stuff like that, so, but it's not until they get to that level that the district steps in.
All right, are there any other further questions on the DECA trip? And, to nationals, I'm sorry, that's twelve-three is nationals. No? All right then, all in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. So order without objection, and our last twelve.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve twelve point twelve, conference attended, the yoga and mindfulness for kids.
We have a motion and a second. Can we get around to the questions and comments?
Yeah, just a quick question on this. Um, could be a little more explanation as into who this is gearing towards? Are we talking about starting to use yoga in classrooms? Or are we talking about a different set of students? I'm a little confused as into, are we going to start offering yoga and meditation in class?
Um, no, it's part of, I mean, not in, no, per se, but I think, and I think I, I got this out, uh, this morning, um, that, um, and I had a chance to, uh, to conference with, uh, with, uh, Mr. Vores on this. Um, conference provides strategy to help students regulate emotional, emotions as well as de-escalate. And our, and our social worker does, does do group sessions with our students, is part of her job description, and she also works within the special education realm, uh, throughout the day as well. So our hope is that these tech, you know, no yoga, my wife would kill me because she's a yoga, um, the yoga principles would be, would be applied, uh, and these strategies would be applied of de-escalation to our special education students and classes, and these techniques would be shared with our teachers, uh, as well. And then it would, it would span more, um, you know, throughout, throughout our classrooms and not just, you know, not just teaching yoga, because we do offer different pieces of that in the physical education, uh, department. Mr., is there anything, Mr. Vores, you would like, you would like to add? Or, Ms. Pacino?
Would you like to?
Please.
Thank you, Dr. Shirk. I'll just add that, uh, Mrs. Slack is also helping us to implement, at all grade levels actually, morning social skills, behavior management, and self-regulation groups for kids that need instruction in those areas, and also kind of a soft start to their day. So she is, she turns around trainings to our staff all the time. She's also one of our CPI instructors. Um, she's a certified trainer for crisis prevention and intervention in our district, and trains our building level teams. So it's important to note that a lot of times when we're having our staff, um, development days, she's not receiving professional development because she's facilitating professional development. So I think it's important for us to acknowledge that as well, and continue to give her access to some high-quality and evidence-based, um, methods, so that she can turn that around for our teachers and students.
Okay, question. Is this type of, I guess, training, whatever, like that, is this something we are currently using now, and this is additional training to help, or is it something that we're going to try something new?
We are currently through our Health and Wellness Grant. We've been doing quite a bit of mindfulness and self-regulation work with our students, particularly at the Keta Two buildings. Um, so this would be an extension of that. A lot of the teachers I know at West and at Ringing Rocks are incorporating a chime, and students know the skills then to, you know, find your center, think about what you're supposed to be doing, focus on the present, mind-body, in-the-moment kind of thing. So it's, it's a bit of an extension of what we're already doing in the Keta Twos. And then at the high school, she has also partnered as part of her differentiated supervision project with one of our special education teachers, and they're actually incorporating, um, yoga and mindfulness as two strategies, among others, to help kids, um, develop those self-regulation skills.
I think this is wonderful that we're doing this for our students, because I think it's so needed, and it will really help. It, you know, a select few, but I really do believe it'll really help. Thank you.
Are there any other questions on this program? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. So order without objection, and now on to the committees.
All right, I'm gonna report on the JOC. Unfortunately, last night I had, um, a family emergency come up. My mom was stuck at the airport, but, um, I could not attend the meeting. Yeah, yeah, with the water main break, yeah. But, um, hmm? Oh, actually, Chris Ford, Keith Ford, and, yes, but thank you, but, so I'm just gonna try to wing this, and I appreciate you being the delivery guy, yeah. But, um, just an update, the, the NOCTD testings, the Western Center scored an overall ninety percent competitive and advanced to sixty-nine percent of sto, students scoring advanced overall. That is amazing. That is amazing. Um, enrollment currently for two thousand eighteen-nineteen, we will have five hundred and eighty-seven students. We currently have only twenty-seven seats available in Level One for next year. The field programs are auto tech, carpentry, commercial art, cosmetology, diesel tech, early childhood, electrical, intro to medicine, health science tech, and sports medicine. The vacancies are in collision. We have four spots. Computer info systems, we have two. Culinary, we have five. Dental, three. HVAC, we have three positions. Metal tech is one, and protective services is nine. We have eighty, a total of eighty-five freshmen, twenty from Potsgrove. So that program, bringing the freshmen in, has really been successful. Summer camp, we have a hundred and sixteen campers enrolled, and they finally had good weather for the car show, and they had approximately seventy cars show up. And remember, they, it was like a donation for the Skills USA as a fundraiser, and they were happy to say they raised over six hundred dollars, which is awesome. An update on sports medicine, PLC. On Monday, May seventh, they hosted a station YP LC for sports medicine. Mr. Mortson set it up and put it under a run grant greaser out, out for sports instructor. The foc, focus was preparing for sports medicine to become a program of study by the PDE and work towards getting the NOCTD one approval needed. We have over twenty people from all over the state who came to learn about our program, toured the facility, and learned how to enhance or create their own programs. So, like I said, it's banging. So, like I said, it's banging over there. Just a reminder, on May twenty-third at seven PM will be senior recognition and all is welcome. It's a nice time for the students. At our middle school, yes.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I'm going to report out on the policy committee. We reviewed three different policies at that meeting. First was policy number nine zero six, the public complaint procedures. The reason for reviewing this was simply due to ESSA requirements. We needed to make sure things were, were all in there like they should be. Nothing of essence really was changed. Dr. Harney, help me if I'm incorrect with that. But in reviewing this, we did change a little wording to make it more sensible in regards to if school board members receive or when we receive complaints from the, from, from anybody, staff or community. And instead of sending them right to the superintendent, we would follow the chain of command depending on the level of that. So that wording was put in there and that was sent to thirty-day review. Second policy was two thirty-nine regarding foreign exchange students. I for one was pleased that this was brought up. But the reason for it being brought up was simply to assure that every district needed to have in there that foreign exchange students that were accepted into the schools were taking the home language survey as our other students are required to do. So we added that wording, but we also spent a little time on this policy making sure that it really fits administrations at the high school level and Dr. Shirk's feelings and viewpoints on the fact that we should be accepting foreign exchange students. So we will continue with the policy as is, at least that's our recommendation to the board, that we do allow non-tuition paying foreign exchange students that, who are coming from programs that have been vetted by the administration and that have the appropriate visa. So that was two thirty-nine. Last policy we looked at was two seventeen, graduation requirements. The reason this was looked at was specifically to make a minor change to adjust to the changes that were made, I believe, last year in regards to credit requirements and specific to the Western Center students because of the schedule. So it was tweaked a little bit with the health and phys ed credits so they can still graduate on time if they're attending WTC. But in that discussion, two other things were brought up that I'm going to ask Bob if we can have some discussion here about in some direction. One was a question regarding graduation requirements and should we be requiring foreign language as many colleges are requiring that foreign language? You know, that students have that to, to be accepted. So we had discussed that a little bit, felt that we needed to bring that to the board. If there was agreement that it be discussed, then either come back to us or probably more appropriately go to the curriculum committee for the administrators there to chime in and give their opinions on that. Second piece, I would like some feedback on, question was raised regarding early college admissions. Currently, our policy states that students have to be in the district for a complete school year. And there was some question on why that is. So again, if majority of the board feels like the committee felt that this should be looked at a little more, not saying to change it, but just to kind of understand it a little better, then again, I would recommend that it go to curriculum committee to be reviewed. So thoughts on those two issues? Do we want further discussion on that and is there any objection? If so, let the curriculum committee look at that.
Mr. Parker, can I weigh in just on those two pieces? I did some investigation on both of those. They both have answers that can be, I think, fairly easily communicated. The second point that you brought up, we met and all felt that that should not be in there, that that requirement didn't make sense. Somebody coming from the outside could, could be here six months but still qualify if they met all the other requirements. We, we wanted to take that barrier away, so we would suggest removing that piece because as you brought up, it really didn't make sense to any of us who looked at that. The second piece was around the requirements for foreign language. And there's clear reasons why that's not delineated. And if you wanted to bring that up at our committee, we could, or here, or however you want to do it. But it was a fairly simple answer that I didn't have at the time that may have shortcut that piece.
If it's a simple answer, I would suggest, Board Vice President, that we hear it now and then decide if we need to review it or just send the policy as is to four thirty-day.
Yes, let's, let's hear the discussion.
Dr. Ziegler, would you mind coming forward? It's the question we talked about, why we don't have requirements for foreign language. And to my knowledge, I don't think any district does in, in our research so far, and there's reasons around that.
We actually have a survey going out to all the school districts on which districts do. I met with our counselor to talk about this and we met as a principal team to review this also. And when you put it in as a graduation requirement, that means that everybody has to do it across the board. So a few students that would, right off the bat, really struggle to fit it into their schedule. Western Center students, first of all, they already have a very tight schedule. That's a, that's about fifteen, eighteen percent of our population. So that's a very, you know, it's a sizable group, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty students right there off the bat. The second one is our special education students. Our special education students, when we look at, you know, you put that in as a graduation requirement, you know, getting their needs that they already have into the schedule would really be cumbersome. And the supports that they need to do that would be, would be difficult. The other thing is, obviously, it's going to require an increase in staffing because then every student would have to take this. But the other piece is that, you know, across the board, colleges do not require this universally. This is, you know, you can go to college, whether you, we have a number of students going to Monco in our state schools, you can get into Monco and a state school without a world language and it's perfectly appropriate. And we think that, you know, we, we believe the world language is highly valuable for a student and we encourage students to be bilingual as much as possible. But to make it a graduation requirement would limit opportunities for students across the board.
And one other piece that you brought up before that I think is pertinent is that students that are applying to certain universities where that is a requirement, the guidance office makes that quite clear of what the requirements are, so they're not going in blind.
Yeah, we actually meet with all of our seniors and, and they go over the requirements when they look at different colleges. And, you know, I sit in a lot of those meetings and they tell them, listen, if you're going to go to this college, this is what they require, they require two years, this college requires three years, this college doesn't require any. Some of it also depends on what major you want to go into.
Whenever we discuss this, really briefly, the two, first two points you brought up, the Western Center, again, we agreed that, we were talking about it, it seemed like, yeah, that would make sense to apply it to the Western Center because they're not here all the time. And the same with those with, you know, IEPs that would, that would not apply to. And also the discussion that even if we were to bring this, you know, move forward to something like this or talk about it, it couldn't go into effect for several years. I'd actually asked Mr. Patralla for a list of the schools, the colleges that most of our students went to. And the top, he gave me a list of schools. Monco did not, but then he listed Penn State and several other state schools. And that are the ones that our students go to the most. And every single one of them did require college for that. Just, you know, contradict what you said, but it did, they very clearly did do that. I mean, we want to be a district of choice, so this is part of the reason why, you know, if we want to move forward with being a district of choice, we're talking about broadening our horizons. Whether you're going to college or whether you're going to workforce, a second language might actually help us get on par with a lot of the world. So there's, there's a reason for that there. Like I said, I mean, it's going to improve our students, but I just very much disagree with the fact that you're saying that state colleges don't require because they very clearly did. The private-owned colleges, those did not, or the two, he only gave me two private-owned. Neither of those stated that they did not. One, I had a call which was Drexel, they said they did. The other one, I couldn't get a response from whether they did or not. But also, like you said, for talking to your people going, looking at college, you're talking to one of your seniors. By that point, it's too late if they decide, I want to go into this field, but the colleges I want to go to require it. So this is part of the reason why, again, also to not shackle any, you know, or hobble, I should say, any students by having them go in knowing that I'm going to be taking two languages so that by the time I become a junior and I sort of an idea of what field I want to go into, then you're not restricted by, oh, well, I can't really go to those colleges because I didn't take a second language or anything like that, so. I mean, I think there needs to be more discussion than on this, so that's my opinion.
I agree with you, I agree with you absolutely that it opens a lot of doors. However, comma, I disagree completely with making a graduation requirement. Our function here is to give the students of Potts Grove an opportunity, an opportunity to learn as much and as fast as, and as far as they can. But I think to put everybody in that same, you know, funnel of saying everybody will learn a foreign language if you're going to, I, I don't agree with that. We go for the opportunity. I think we've got the exploratory program in the middle school. If I had my brothers, the exploratory program moved to the elementary school. Okay, the sooner, the sooner, what's that? You know, so it would be, it would be nice, well, we did it one time and it's gone away already. So it's best to have more than one language if it's going to have use to you, okay? And that, how do you know at whatever age? If you're going to college, if you're going to a four-year college, I think it's a good idea. But I don't, I don't think we need to push the majority of our students to a four-year college. I think that's upside down.
I'm not saying you should be pushing them, I'm just saying, even in the right, if you're going right into the workforce, being bilingual is a benefit. And some students may not decide what they want to do with their life until they get to a point where if they decide, I do want to go to, into a circumstance where it requires a second language, it's too late now. That's, that was my concern.
I think bilingualism is wonderful and a great idea. And I lament the fact that I'm monolingual. However, first of all, if you want to broaden the choice, you need to allow space in the curriculum. And people talk about law of conservation of mass, there's a law of conservation of time. Students have to have as much opportunity in their education as possible to explore their interests. And not all students want to be bilingual in high school. If it's a requirement, they'll do it. I took two years of Spanish in high school. I took two years of Latin, which we won't bother to talk about why. But I didn't do it because I wanted to, I did it because it was required.
Like English or math or studies or science?
Which were topics I was interested in. I wasn't interested in Latin and I wasn't interested at the time in Spanish. So I think we need to give the students as much opportunity to become themselves rather than for us to force them into a mold. And so I agree with you, I agree with the idea because frankly, there are a lot of schools out there, other than state schools, that don't require language. Language requirements have been rolled back. There was a language requirement at Lehigh when I went there as an undergraduate, but it got rolled back. And I think we have to understand that we want to aim our kids to a college, to a career, to a profession, to whatever. And we need to accommodate what they want. Hopefully I'm not being too long-winded.
That's okay, I would, I was looking at Mason, see if he could give his thought.
He was shaking his watch.
So. I, I take Spanish. I, I don't, I like, I like it how it is now, especially for myself because if you were to make it a requirement, I would be nervous that you would section it out from what it is because I believe it's under the arts and humanities, which is good for me because I don't like art. And it has absolutely nothing to do with what I want to do. I want to be a lawyer, I want to be a politician, two bad things. But I do want to be them, and it would be better for me to be bilingual than to paint. You know what I'm saying? So it gives me an opportunity to not do the arts, which the arts are great, you know? But at the same time, it helps me with that. And my college does require it, but I know that there are some that do not. But I would, I would say, in my opinion, just from looking at all these schools that I've been to, like, I started my college church when I was in the eighth grade, which is crazy, I, I really did. Most of them, it seems like, are moving in the trend towards it, the foreign languages, instead of against it. Most of that, I think, goes back to, they're doing so much with the, the study abroad and they're trying to expand your horizon that way and trying to get you, everybody onto a level, not level playing field, but trying to make people have more connections across the globe and make us better. And I know at my mom's work, they pay, like, pay comes in too because the people who can do the exact same job that she does get paid about ten thousand dollars more a year. So it, it all goes back to, it goes back to a lot of things. When you can communicate with people, you can get your message across better, you can also get paid more, which is nice.
When you talk about the graduation requirements and stuff, and I was just doing real quick, obviously, real search and looking at some of the other schools and such like that, not necessarily what I say, which I do support, the world language is a possibility of the graduation requirement. When I look at our graduation requirements, there's a reason why we have the students, obviously, PA Department of Education has a very major play in the say here as well. But I think a lot of the times the graduation requirements are to try to have the student be what they all say, the well-rounded student, give them ideas, something that may not be interested in, but we're going to say you have to do it this and we're going to say you need to do that. With our graduation requirements, it's probably the most generic requirements that I could find. As in, we do four English, three math, three science, four social studies, two humanities, six electives. When you look at all the other schools in the area, they break it down much more where you have to have technical writing point five, you have to have this. They try to broaden the student a lot more than we do. We pretty much are saying like essence, well, if you're not interested in art, we're not going to make you take art, just go take six business classes because that's what you're interested in. The question just is, I don't know if students really have a chance to say what they're one hundred percent interested in when they're starting school in eighth and ninth and tenth grade. I don't think the students really understand what an art class may be like or what a technical writing class may be like unless they've actually taken those and have been immersed in that type of thing. I'm not necessarily saying I want world language as a thing, but I would recommend that the policy committee look at the grade requirements, the graduation requirements, per se, of how other districts are doing it. And maybe we can just see if the requirements are exactly what we want or if maybe we want to add a few more little things.
Sure, we could definitely look at other school districts in the area and compare ours. And that'd be something that we could easily dig into and get the data on, look at that. The other thing to consider is just because you take Spanish for two years does not mean you're bilingual. You know, so I mean, that's, I hear a lot of people using the phrase bilingual, I just want to, want you to think about that, but.
It does give you a nice base, though.
Oh, absolutely.
I took three years of German. I really wish I would have taken three years of Spanish instead because I, it would be much more beneficial to me now because I could at least get, pick up something here and there, which I can in German. But you don't hear a lot of people speaking German out there. And I, I wish I did because there's, I actually, I took my son with me on a, a real estate showing because I needed someone who, who could speak Spanish. And Brady can't really speak it, but I said, you know, you got a better chance than I do of understanding what they're saying. And at least he could be, you know, pick up some of it and explain it a little bit to me, whereas I was going to be totally lost.
And we fully appreciate, I mean, we want, we want as many students taking world language as possible because we believe that a student with a world language is, it's a very rich experience for them. And there's no doubt in our mind that students who take a world language greatly benefit from that and our world language program is outstanding. I think the thing that for us is make, when you make it a graduation requirement, that means you make it for every single student. Student that wants to do the military, student that wants to go right out to the workforce, you know, students at the Western Center, variety of students.
The only thing is, I'll, I'll disagree with that, just that last statement. As in, if you look at our graduation requirements, it does have stipulations saying not for Western Center students. It does have stipulations as in it's not for every student.
We could certainly do that.
That's all.
Okay, all right. This was supposed to be a quick and easy answer and it's obviously not. So, 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 so.
Just the discussion, the humor and afterwards.
So, what we'll say is we can go ahead and throw this back to the curriculum committee, uh, as you suggested, if everybody's in agreement with that, all right? Um, one of the things I remember when I walked these halls was what we had were different tracks in, in the, in the senior thing, and it gave you opportunities. It said, here, if you want to go into business, these are the courses you should take. It meshed with the state requirements as well as Potts Grove's opportunities, and it kind of gave a little bit of guidance to students. There was still flexibility in it. I knew I wanted to be in the, in the engineering curriculum, and I was going to college, and those were, there were classes available for me to do that, that were, that were heavy in those things. I never took advanced biology, because that wasn't going to be a thing for me in nuclear power. So there was, there was guidance, but there wasn't prescription, which is again what I'm getting at. I would like to get back to the idea of having sort of, uh, the, the Chinese menu, if you will, the, the, here, if you, if you want to go into business and not go to college, here's the courses you can take that'll set you up. And if you want to supplement that with, uh, you know, another technical school, you can, but this will give you the, what you need to be successful in business. That's kind of where I would like to go. I'm not on the committee, but there you have my two cents. So with that, we're, we're getting ready for new business.
May I ask one question of you?
You may.
So, if you're saying that you would like to have a track, or whatever you will call it, that if someone was geared towards going into the workforce and business, would you say to them that having a few years of a second language would be unofficial?
My personal belief?
Yes.
Everybody ought to speak a second language.
Okay, thank you.
Or a third. A friend of mine, his student went to work at Volvo, uh, his, his son went to work at Volvo, uh, and he became on an international team. He was expected to rotate, not among offices in the United States, but among offices around the world. And he got to his first posting in Germany and was out with the team, and, uh, he said, oh, wow, I, I feel like I, I feel a little uncomfortable, you know, I only, I speak two languages. And they said, well, yeah, we're, we're embarrassed for you. You're the, you know, everybody else speaks five, okay? So, there's, you can't say enough about foreign language and the experience it gives you. If nothing else, it helps you with English grammar, because you understand things better when it comes from a different perspective. I love languages. And, oh, by the way, Latin and Greek should still be requirements. Um, honest to God. So, I, I, I'm going to support you on the idea of languages, but I'm not going to support you on prescription of languages. Yeah? Okay.
Now we come to new business.
Okay, I do have something, um, this is, what's, right. Um, this is from P S B A. They are asking if we would like to send a voting delegate to the P S B A delegate assembly meeting, which, uh, goes on during their P S B A and P A S A school leadership conference. My assumption is that we won't be sending anybody, but if somebody would like to go, what?
Is this Hawaii?
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
Actually, where, where is it and the dates?
You know, it's in Harrisburg, I assume. The dates are, uh, well, the, the, um, the voting date is October nineteenth. And the conference is October seventeenth through nineteenth. And it is, you know, it's funny, I did look for that when I was reading through this before, and I could only assume that it was in Harrisburg, but yeah, it might be in Hershey. But it doesn't really tell you.
No.
No.
But it usually is in Hershey, I think.
Yeah. So if anybody is interested and wants to be our voting delegate, I do have to send this form back in, stating who that will be, if anybody. Uh, we are allowed to send two, I believe, because we are a third-class district.
Forward me that information. I'd like to look at it first.
I can give you it right now.
Yeah.
Because I have a copy myself. Yeah, we're a third-class district.
Don't be offended, only Pittsburgh and Philadelphia first.
Are there any other items of new business?
Okay.
Okay, if there's no more items of new business.
I do, actually, I'm sorry.
Oh, my goodness.
I do have some new business.
This is not an auction.
I know, I'm so sorry, I was reading this. Um, I-
We're not taking bits here. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I do have some new business. I have really been an advocate for us, um, as a school district, to get more awareness for drug abuse, alcohol abuse, addiction. And I, I was really thrilled that we brought this NOPE in. So I actually, when I went to the parents' meeting, I brought extra brochures for all of us, because I thought it was really information, informational. And, um, NOPE Task Force stands for Narcotics Overdose Prevention and Education, and their mission is to diminish the frequency and impact of drug overdose death through the community, through community education, family support, support and purposeful advocacy. And their mission is a world, oh, thank you. Our, their mission is a world free of overdose deaths. So if you do get a chance to look at this, like I said, their, their program that I went to for the parents was very informational. I was very excited to see that was offered to our middle school, is on the tenth, I believe, and the high school. So, um, so I just wanted to share that with you, and that's all. I'm done.
All right, before anybody else can make anything else, a motion to adjourn will now be in order.
Real quick, uh, shout out to-
I'm trying, people. I'm trying.
Shout out to Mrs. Jones. Um, I've read with, um, interest, uh, the, what do you call it, Bill, the weekly report we get from this, uh, different schools, the different buildings, and really, uh, want to say how I appreciate, one, um, Mrs. Jones, uh, leading, uh, taking part in leading one of the professional development days or sessions. Uh, we have very educated, knowledgeable administrators and, and directors, and, and happy to see that happening. Would love to see that happen more. Uh, and especially the topic that she, uh, taught on in regards to the impact of trauma. Uh, I agree with her comments and the portents and how that affects, uh, kids, you know, all around, three sixty, and especially in the classroom. So thank you, Mrs. Jones, for doing that and your leadership with that.
Okay, circling back around to public comment. Are there any questions, comments or concerns about any of the topics that were brought up under new business, or anything that was not on the agenda? If not, a motion to adjourn will now be in order.
So, who? The other guy, if you didn't see, uh-
Do we have a second?